Okay, good morning. This is the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, November 17th. I am the Chair, Sean Flaherty, with me is Vice Chair and Commissioner Rick Vest and Commissioner Deb Shore and Commissioner Krista Yocum. Please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please begin.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the county clerk staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda nine in one hour minutes, approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, November 10, 2020.
Move approval?
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number two are claims, approval of all claims processed through November 17, 2020.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number three are consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there's an exception, these items will be approved as one with a single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are approval of. Subaward with the City of Lincoln for the Take Pause 2.0 program. Grant contract with the City of Lincoln for the Take Pause 2.0 program. Utility permits with no cost to the county for the following. Number 2046, allowing wind serving to install new communication lines due to the removal and replacement of county structure F-88 on North 14th Street. Number 2049, allowing ALLO to install communication service to the new LES Rokeby facility located at 9445 Rokeby Road. Amendment to county contract C-20-695 with Jones Automotive, Inc. for supply and installation of emergency equipment for city and county law enforcement vehicles. Received and placed on file, the former reports for October 2020. Lancaster County Clerk and Records and Information Management.
I move approval of the consent items.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number four is new business. For A is a resolution in a matter of amending the open meetings policy for the Lancaster County Board of County Commissioners, the Lancaster County Board of Equalization, the Lancaster County Board of Corrections, and all Lancaster County task forces and advisory committees.
Good morning. This resolution is intended to reflect changes to the Open Meetings Act adopted by LB-148. Generally, what that does is require some additional notice. We have to publish notice of all of our meetings in the newspaper, which requires some additional lead time. Clerk's office has done a great job in helping us get that in place, and we've sent out notifications to all department heads, elected officials, in case they have any kinds of meetings that fall within the requirement for those additional notices. So everyone's got that additional guidance. Clerk's office provided us some practical tips for everybody, and we handed those out, and we provided a legal framework for the requirements.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. B is an agreement with Public Health Management Corporation for ramps plus software for the Lancaster County Adult Drug Court to match offenders with appropriate services for improved public safety and public health. The cost to county is $10,000 per year.
Good morning. Kim Etherington, Director of Lancaster County Community Corrections. This is the software that Pat and I mentioned last week or two weeks ago, I don't recall now. We won't be using this software just with the adult drug court, but we are going to be using it for all the programs underneath my administration with the goal of better placing folks into the right level of programming, especially when it comes to the diversion programming that we're doing with the prosecutor's office. I think the first year, the cost of this is going to be covered by the prosecutor's office through some grant funds.
Very good. I would move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. receives an agreement with no wait inside for acuing software for the public to use while getting services at the county treasurer's office. Agreement is effective for one year. The cost to county shall not exceed $9,348.
Thanks for being with us.
Rachel Garver, Lancaster County Treasurer. This software will enable us to start using, being able to take appointments at the motor vehicle office on North 46th Street. It's very inexpensive, so we're hoping this works out pretty good.
Commissioner, sure.
Can you just explain a little bit how it's actually going to work? Are people going to sign up ahead of time online or once they get to the facility?
Well, they'll be able to sign up online, and what will happen will be they will be able to text us that they're in the parking lot, and then we can text them if they stay in the car, and then we will text them back that they can come in, we're ready for them. There is a component that will allow us, if a person doesn't have the phone that will work, to take texts. But we're not, I can't explain exactly how that's going to work. We're working on that. They should be able to sign up for a time and then just come in at that time and then have to probably wait either, they won't have to wait very long. If they come early, yes, but if they come at the time they're supposed to come, they should be able to get pretty much right in.
And for people without maybe internet access, they can call the office and sign up for a time?
Yeah, we can get them to sign, get them signed up. We will have a way of doing that. Because we want to take care of everyone. But the majority of people that will probably want to use this probably will have a smartphone, and that's what, that's the basis for operating it. But for those that don't have it, we will have put on a sign or on, because if they don't have internet access, then putting it on our website, we will put it on our website, but that, we need to have multiple ways of doing that.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Will there still be walk-ins?
Oh, yeah, well, that'll probably be the majority, because this is, it'd be a new culture of how things work. And, yeah, it'd be nice to get to no lines at all, because they all have appointments, but that's, at this point, probably just a dream.
Well, I'm booking an appointment, I'll tell you that.
I would just say that you're following the model of Best Buy's Geek Squad. You know, if you want service, you go get an appointment with the Geek Squad, and then you walk in and they're ready for you. So it appears that this model's being used in other settings.
Well, it's very much like getting reservations for a restaurant, although I want to do better than maybe still having to wait at some places, but I want, I want us to be able to take them at the exact time that we, we'll see. We're just going to start slowly on this and go. I will move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. D is a grant contract with John Goodwin to provide a juvenile justice training session at the Nebraska Community Aid and Juvenile Justice Conference on November 5, 2020, in an amount not to exceed $1,300.
Good morning. Sarah Hoyle with Lincoln Lancaster Human Services. This contract was a grant from the Nebraska Crime Commission, and it was to allow our own John Goodwin, Director of Malone Center, to provide a preliminary session on, it was racial equality, let's get to work. And he did amazing, for those of you that were listening to the conference. If you haven't, good news, it was recorded, so you can still log on and see it.
I would move approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. E is a grant contract with Rabble Mill to provide video assets for the Nebraska Community Aid and Juvenile Justice Conference on November 13, 2020, in an amount not to exceed $14,000.
And this is another contract that's funding through the Nebraska Crime Commission. This is actually for Rabble Mill, or as what we know as the Bay, for their kids there and their digital programming to learn more about recording, and also they did 3D mapping. So what it allowed them to do is go out across Nebraska and film some diversion programs, some real community-based programming. They went to Scotts Bluff, they went to Skylar, they were all over. And it allowed them to go, to learn how to go into these places and digitally map them. So again, this is all recorded, and you can get on the Nebraska Community Aid Conference and kind of see the work of the students. It's really neat.
Again, I'm honored to move approval for this project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Just a question. Do you know, over the, was it six days, how many participants you had? I, I was able to listen to the keynote, the kickoff, and I was just curious about attendance figures.
We had a roughly 500.
Pretty good.
Yeah, it was, it was good. We had very, very positive feedback.
Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. F is a subaward grant with Asian Community and Cultural Center for the ACC serving immigrant and refugee youth.
Okay. And this is funding through the Nebraska Crime Commission. It's through the juvenile services competitive dollars. This was additional funding on top of the funding that they already received, so this was an additional $30,000 for the total that you see in front of you. It's to allow the Asian center to expand to high schools, to do their, oh, they have their life after high school program to get kids ready for college or whatever their next step may be. They also have the Untold Migrant Stories, which are really, I know you've seen them, but they're really, really neat. If you ever have the opportunity, I can send you more information on those. And then they do a Saturday Sudanese Club for some of our immigrants, refugees.
This is all really good programming. I actually had an intern write a profile on someone who referred to the life after high school program as a refugee youth and how valuable that was in her life, and put her on a path to college, and she feels ready.
Yeah, they do really important programming there.
I move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. G is designation of official Lancaster County newspapers for 2021 publications of transportation projects as follows: Lincoln Journal Star, The News of Waverly, The Voice News of Hickman, The Crete News, and The Seward County Independent.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number five is update on COVID-19 and Lancaster County response.
Serious.
Yeah. It's real, watch the news. Friend of mine who's NER nurse up on the reservation has dealt with patients who are dying who don't believe that it's real. She's been telling me stories that literally their last words were, "This can't be happening, it's not real." What else to say?
That's hard to follow.
Yeah, right?
What we have related to board business, I'm sure that you've seen the governor's release of different color-coded risk assessment, and the far-right side under red, if we get to that point, then the, then public bodies have the opportunity to elect to have remote meetings. I would just like to gauge the board's interest in getting the mechanics in place. In case we get to that point, then we would be able to flip the switch and go remote.
Absolutely.
Big thumbs up for me.
All right, we'll get that, we'll get that stuff in place. We'll talk to the clerk's office and make sure we're ready to go once that happens. Thank you.
Anything else for the COVID-19 update? We're going to have a second one here later during the staff meeting as well. Okay. Oh, there we go.
We have it right now.
Perfect timing. Yeah, no, it literally is. We are just wrapping up the COVID-19 update, so this look actually is just dead on perfect.
I thought I heard that. I was, sorry, Pat Lopez, Health Director, I was listening to the chief medical officer give us an update on the hospital, so then all of a sudden I thought I heard COVID. I just wanted to give you an update on what's happening right now. Currently, we have 136 patients in our Lincoln hospitals and with COVID, and 13 of them are on vents. We've seen a dramatic increase in our number of hospitalizations, as you've all been hearing about statewide, we have 914 patients now in the hospital, which is an increase of about 120 from last week. Maybe not increasing as greatly, but what we're seeing is people are more ill, staying in the hospital longer, and they're continuing to try and keep people off vents using some of the new methodologies. And we do have a new drug that I'm working with, trying to assimilate ethically how we can administer that in a community. The other thing, just so you know, right now, we're at 13,077 COVID-positive residents in our community, and you saw on Sunday, we had 408 cases. Yesterday, we had 202 reported, so we've never seen numbers like this. Now, the total number of cases last week, ending November 14th, were 1,721, which is the highest number of cases reported so far during the pandemic. Our previous highest weekly total was 1,246, which was the week before. So in November, we've been progressively going up. We had an average of 693 cases a week in October, so you can see we're exceeding that. In November, the first two weeks, we've had an average of 400, 1,483 cases per week. So we've almost doubled the number of cases. In October, I just want to say 57% of our cases to date are from September 1st, so since the beginning of the pandemic to now and that time. And in the last 10 weeks, 40% of our cases are in the 30 to 59 age group, and another 13% of the cases are in the 60 to 79 age group. We have 61 deaths in our community due to COVID, and 16 deaths were reported this month. And for October, which was our highest number of deaths, we had 21. So we're already at 16 deaths for this month. And our other highest total was eight deaths that we saw in May with the meat processing plant outbreak. So our positivity rate ending last Sunday for that week was 29.3%, which is our highest positivity rate to date. In the previous week, it was 25%. Our seven-day rolling average of cases in Lancaster County increased from 77 cases a day the first week of October to 250 cases a day for the past seven days. The good news is about 36% of our community has been tested for COVID. There's plenty of options for testing available. I'm working on a more rapid test that'll be available. We'll work with the county, I'll work with Dave on that, how we might be able to implement that with corrections and other staff. There's a limited supply. So the testing remains high. We're moving the Test Nebraska site this Sunday at Gateway, just over into the parking lot at Sears. They're going to be in the new, I call them garages, but they're pods that are being built by the businessman, businessperson in our community. It's going to be a much better setup, but we're still going to move our trailer over there that we've been using from FEMA. So just, I'm going to stop there and just let you know, we continue to meet frequently with our nursing homes and our following up. I think you all saw, we had an outbreak in a nursing home that involved some mortalities. We also are working, talking with our bars and restaurants, our sport activity centers, meet with school administrators every week, meet with UNL every day, and we are constant, in contact with our physicians, usually weekly, we have a call with all of them, but we meet regularly also with the hospitals. So I'll leave it there in case you have any questions.
We've heard some good news about vaccines. Realizing that it's weeks, if not, you know, maybe a couple months away. Have any discussions been had at this point with state officials about how a program might be instituted, or am I a little too far ahead?
No, I actually, thank you for asking that. We actually have a plan in place for Lancaster County already, and we've done some updates to that. We don't know what the federal guidelines are going to be. The state has a plan, we've looked at that, we've modified that. We already have multiple arrangements, or agreements, in the county to have people work with us to get the vaccine out. We've just ordered some more supplies that we'll need for administration, and we convened a, we call it a vaccine, we called it a vaccine committee, but we brought together a lot of our physicians from a variety of practice areas, our aging partners, folks, and others to really talk about, how can we do this, where would it go, who are our priority groups? So we've got that planned, we're going to be ready to go as soon as we need to.
That's excellent.
And we've been doing a lot with flu, so I hope everybody's gotten their flu shot. You don't have to tell me, but.
I think pretty much the whole board got their flu shot on the same day, actually, like back in October.
100%.
Yeah, okay. Anything else? Thank you. I just felt it was really important to give you an update on what's happening. We're still looking at what we're going to have to do, really time a really call to action for our community. Thank you.
Thanks for being down here. Okay, let's move on to public comment.
Next is number six, those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, not ungenymated so at this time.
Any members of the public here to speak on items not on the agenda?
Next is number seven, announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Tuesday, November 17, 2020, immediately following the Board of Equalization meeting in Room 112 of the county city building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners has canceled the Lancaster County 101 meeting scheduled on Tuesday, November 17, 2020, at 3:30 PM in the NACO conference room at 1335 H Street. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, November 24, 2020, at 9 AM in Room 112 of the county city building, with the staff meeting immediately following. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447 or commish@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on Link TV City. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on Link TV and can be viewed on YouTube.
I move adjourn.
Second. We have a motion and a second for adjournment. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Very good. We will now convene as the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
A copy of Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the county clerk staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda nine in one hour minutes, approve the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, November 10, 2020. Approve the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, November 10, 2020.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number two is a public hearing. This is a motor vehicle tax exemption application for the Food Bank of Lincoln.
Anyone here to speak on the motor vehicle tax exemption application? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Move down to item number three.
Next is action on motor, on the following motor vehicle tax exemption application.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number four is public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county Board of Equalization business, not on agenda, may do so at this time.
I move adjourn.
We have a motion and a second for adjournment. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Very good. We adjourned.